I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, October 21st, 2024, to order at this time. And we will start with our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Ben Warren, leading us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you to conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Be with those who have been devastated by Hurricane Selena Milton and guard their hearts and minds, give them peace that surpasses all understanding, and bless the work of relief agencies and those providing emergency assistance. Father, we pray for our military and first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice, and may all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faith, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to acknowledge the elected officials that are with us this evening. Miga Jarman is here with us, the Register of Deeds, also Mr. Rick Grant, Alan Alderman for North Tops Beach, and then, as usual, Sheriff Chris Thomas is with us as well. So we appreciate all of them coming to our meetings. That being said, we ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioner shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the Agenda. So now we need to start with item one, adoption of the Agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? We have a potential amendment to the Agenda?
I haven't seen it. You'll give it to me, you can hold on to it.
Do you want to make that move?
I'd like to make a motion that needs to be made by adopting the meeting agenda to amend item six, airport advisory appointments, to add Richard Grant for consideration of appointment and a large category. His application on file has been certified by the Clerk's Office already.
We have a motion, second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion carries, and Mr. Grant will be added to that for consideration.
Motion to best adopt the Agenda as amended.
We got a vote. I'm sorry, Paul. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. We're getting there. Good. So that motion carries now. Mr. Commissioner Buchanan?
Motion to adopt the Agenda as amended.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Item two, motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, and we'll move right to item three. Mr. Smitherman for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have anyone signed up.
This evening's public comment section.
Thank you. So we'll move right to item four, presentation from Onslow Memorial Hospital, and Dr. Penny Burlingame-Dill will be doing that this evening.
I know you're going to keep me on time. I have 15 minutes, so let me know, Dallas, okay? I do want to thank you all for providing some time on the agenda for me to provide a hospital update, and I, at this point, would like to thank you also, while we're thanking folks, for all of the support that you've given, and that's every day, whether it is your own feedback because of your own experiences, family members' experiences at the hospital, or constituent experiences. Every time I get a text or a phone call, I am greatly appreciative of it because it helps us be better. So please never hesitate to do that, and I thank you to each of you who have done that. Also, I want to take time to thank our 13-member boards. We do have in attendance tonight the Chair of our Board, Dr. Jenny Albano, but our board is made up and comprised, designed to represent our community of 13 individuals who are very much dedicated to the success of the organization, and they take their fiduciary responsibility as well as their clinical quality oversight very seriously and work with a passion every day, and every time we look at a new initiative. In addition, next slide. We have a senior team. Don't focus on this one too long, because you know what? It's been a rough eight years. We have a senior team made up of seven, eight individuals who are equally dedicated, but I really, while we're thanking folks, need to tell you that every staff member, medical staff member, coworker, colleague, teammate, that steps into, walks through that door and steps into the four walls of Onslow Memorial Hospital, does so with a passion for their patients and to provide care. Next slide. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our incredible partners with UNC Health. We have been in a management service agreement with UNC Health since January 1, 2019, so we are finishing up our sixth year, if you can believe that. That's the third iteration of a management service agreement, and we're hoping that we can become even more clinically integrated with time and perhaps see some permanence with that relationship. But you can see the footprint here for the state, all of the UNC entities that are somehow affiliated, and all of this, they bring to bear in our relationship because we get to benchmark off of what they do. So whether it's like organizations, different organizations, but they have an incredible bench depth of expertise that we benefit from all the time. Similarly, our mission, which is to provide excellent patient health services in a healing and family-centered environment, is very similar to the philosophy of care that UNC brings to bear. The system values, which we have adopted, that you see beneath the mission statement of Carolina Care, "One Great Team" and "Leading the Way," it starts with me, all are system-wide values. So every hospital that you see represented on this state map actually all has the same value system, and we try to emulate that throughout. Everything that you see up here, you pretty much know. Onslow Memorial Hospital was founded in 1944 in Onslow County. We just celebrated our 80th anniversary, if you can believe that. In fact, Chairman Foster was one of our speakers, not to mention, he was born at the hospital, I'm just saying. And it is 162 acute care hospitals serving Greater Jacksonville and Onslow County. We are joint commission accredited, you'll see that later. The statistics you see at the bottom is a point in time. It's a snapshot, so if, there's some fluctuation, but we have about 1,200 employees. 201 active medical staff at that point in time, recognize that that's just active medical staff. There are different categories, locum tenens, telehealth, not included in that count, so the number is actually quite a bit higher. 22 employed physicians that make up Onslow Ambulatory Services, and that's spread over five clinics that you'll see later on. 13 born members I just spoke to, and 18 volunteers. Just an illustration of some of the awards that we have. Interestingly enough, we're going to talk about what our community looks like when it comes to morbidities, you know, health issues that you see throughout the county. Fortunately, a lot of the awards that you see here address some of those issues. So for example, not only are we joint commission accredited, which is the accrediting body for hospitals and health systems, triennial surveys, we had ours this past year. We typically do avail ourselves of a mid-cycle survey as well, but we also have, through the joint commission, primary stroke certification as well. Stroke is one of those issues that we contend with here in Onslow County. Additionally, we have Commission on Cancer Accreditation, another one of those issues prevalent in Onslow County. But you see the other, the other awards that we've received, whether it's American Heart Association Get With the Guidelines for Stroke and/or Heart Failure, or even 2024 North Carolina's Best Hospitals through Business Review. It's a Blue Cross Blue Shield designation, Blue Distinction for Maternity Care. A lot of that is related to the fact that our average, average age for our population, 27.7, so OB is a booming business in Onslow County, as you can imagine. Comprehensive Service Line, we do have some areas that we want to beef up, and we currently have some medical staff development plans that we're working toward growing those services, but all of the services you see, listen on that slide, are represented with Onslow Memorial Hospital. Cardiology, I won't go through the whole list, but general surgery, hospitalists, we actually have an intensivist program as well that focuses on ICU, oncology, radiation oncology, respiratory and pulmonary, women's imaging, wound care. Part of the strategic plan, I have a slide for it later that we'll talk about just a little bit, but it was a push to bring virtual care services here. COVID did a lot of things, a lot of them negative, but it also opened up some doors and made us think about things a little bit differently. And so we did actually see that there's some major utility for virtual care services, and we have them for stroke, neurology, psychiatry, Peds, which is provided virtually by UNC Health, as well as Virtual Care Now, and Care Transition Services. Onslow Ambulatory Services is the employed provider arm. Again, 22 employed providers that are spread over five clinics. The five clinics are listed there. Dermatology, IMPC, Onslow E&amp;T, Pulmonology Associates, and Onslow Surgical Clinic, and then we have several outpatient locations, Onslow Diagnostics, outpatient rehab, ORO with our fabulous Dr. Ross, Onslow Women's Imaging, Wound Care, and Surge Care of Jacksonville. For, as part of the medical staff development plan, we've done a lot of work this past year to recruit and bring in new folks. You can see, one, two, three, four general surgery successful recruits who have joined our medical staff this year. That's great news. In fact, we had lost several general surgeons. Bringing them back was a wonderful thing, and actually, one of them was here, left, came back again. He realized he needed to be part of his OMH family. In fact, there were two providers who left and then came back again. But, so we've had some major successes. We also switched out two contracted services that I think will be meaningful for those who have utilized our services. One is the Emergency Department Professional Services, so we switched to Apollo MD, and for our hospitalist services, we switched to Apogee. Those two contracted services are laser-focused on two areas in particular that encompass a whole lot of work. One is patient experience, and the other is quality, clinical quality scores. And then we have opportunities where we continue to work on medical staff development in cardiology, and we're talking about the outpatient resources, as well as gastroenterology, urology, and palliative care. Lot of statistics here. I want to make sure you know, we switched our fiscal year. So our fiscal year was on an October 1 through September 30 timeline. We switched it this past year to a July 1 to June 30 timeframe, and so what that ended up resulting in was a nine-month budget year. So those numbers that you see are, don't, it's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison because it's a nine-month budget year, but what I can tell you about this is, we are either exceeding or flat when it comes to last year. So if you looked at that, it's three-quarters of the year completed. Let me get through, there we go. Some, so we, daily census has been up. I mean, everything is, there's growth throughout. So daily census has been up from budgeted 83 to 99. Births have been up, admissions up, everything with the exception of surgical cases, and that was because we just brought the new surgeons in this past year. One of them, by the way, is actually a breast surgeon, which is not something we had prior to that. So a new service line. And then ED visits. Here's the key. So I think everybody who's here understands that independent, smaller, community hospitals are struggling from financial standpoint, all of them. It's a national issue. It certainly is a North Carolina issue. For this past fiscal year, we had an operating margin of 3.75 percent. Very unusual, highly unusual, but we have a great team who's working on that. When I say a great team working on it, I mean everyone that we saw on the slides, but I mean every team member. And I'll go into a little more detail as we move on, but excess margin of 4.42. Our cash days are at 68, for those of you who remember when it was at 12. It has come a long way. And then net AR of 61, which we're working to bring down. HUD monitors, noteworthy thing here, all green. And then one of the initiatives we put in place when we went through a business plan in 2018, 2019, to correct, do that financial turnaround, was, we call it the impact tracker, and so we've managed to maintain that. It's just a representation of last year. We roll it over every year. It basically is illustrative of every cost savings and revenue enhancement initiative. There's a spreadsheet that backs up, and it might be 200 lines long, but for the dashboard itself, you can see where we are, and for this past year, it culminated in $1.5 million additional savings. Okay. Spoke to that a little bit. Interestingly enough, the only thing I'll say here is our payer mix has changed a little bit, but not where you might think with the implementation of Medicaid expansion. We didn't see additional Medicaid patients. We saw additional Medicare patients. So it shifted a little bit, but the good news is, our self-pay is down to 4.93. Those of you who remember in prior reports, it was somewhere 9 to 11 percent, so it's halved. All right. The good news is, we just talked about the financial position of the hospital. It's doing very well. I'm grateful for that. UNC helps us in so many ways. One of the ways is to look at org goals, so organizational goals that we have, and they're weighted goals. The great news is here, that I can share with you, is we have implemented, the first time last year, a short-term incentive plan. So any financial positive gains that we make, we actually share with our employees. So this is the second year that we've been able to do that. These are the goals that we put in place for last year. If we meet those goals, along with the financial trigger at the bottom, you see a four there, that allows us to share some short-term incentive bonus with each of our employees, eligible employees, so full-time employees who are eligible. And again, I'm grateful to say that this is the second year that we've been able to do that. In addition to that, UNC and their Quality Improvement Oversight Committee, we focus on those quality measures that require the greatest focus for us. Mortality, sepsis bundle compliance, patient falls with injury, readmissions, and then H cap scores. I will tell you, the one area that we're struggling, we're making improvements in every regard except for patient experience. One of the reasons why we switched out the Emergency Department Service Provider was because of that, and actually, to a certain extent, the hospitalist as well. Switching to the strategic plan, we went through a strategic planning process. It was approved initially in '22, but we've, keep it as a living document. And the priority focus areas were core services, specialty services, clinical quality, medical staff recruitment and retention, and then, as of August of last year, after a board strategic planning session retreat, we added community awareness and perception. I think that's one of the reasons why I'm actually here presenting to you right now. So core services, you can see some of the initiatives that we've been working on, medical office building development, transport, ambulatory surgery center, kind of driven by certificate of need reform, and then medical staff recruitment and retention for our clinical building up and our clinical workforce. Clinical quality, the focus is to try to be consistent. Our Achilles heels that were consistently inconsistent, if I had to identify one area, and then our emergency department. With community awareness and perception, there's a lot of things that we've put into community outreach and engagement, most of them initially focusing on education. These are, on the left-hand side of that slide, this is what's been in the news. So whether it's press releases, Rayford, Crystal Legends podcasts, you can see what we've done. But I'll also say that for community outreach and community partnerships, I'm grateful, so very grateful, for the partnership that we have within the county itself, whether it's Onslow County Health Department and the Community Health Needs Assessment, that's done every three years, we do in partnership, or you all do in partnership with us, and then Community Paramedic Program as well, because that helps us with readmissions and some of our quality measures. But Care and Community Clinic, many, many community outreach partnerships that assist. And then, this is just a picture representation of all that we're working on. I think you can see Commissioner Foster in the ribbon cutting from the rededication ceremony. But I'll end with saying thank you, but also, if I've learned nothing else over this past year of community awareness and perception, we still have our challenges. We still have the things that we're working on. Each of us have our challenges, but I am so grateful that we have sister agencies within Onslow County and all of you who work to support our hospital and the health care that we provide in the community. I look to build upon that. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Outstanding. We appreciate you coming in tonight and sharing that. Lots, lots of good things going on at Onslow Memorial. We appreciate that. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. We now enter at item five, our public hearings for the evening. The first one is the Black Rezoning, and Planning Director Carter Metcalf will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and County Commissioners. Our first item before you is the Black Rezoning Request, P R E Z 2024, number 19. The applicant is Tidewater Associates Incorporated, and the owners are Franklin and Jennifer Black. So you take an overview of the request. It's for Residential 8 Manufactured, or R-8M, to Highway Business, or HB. Tax map number 333A-5. It's located at 111 Rig Street in the Jacksonville Township. Rezoning area is .82 acres, and the existing use of the property is vacant. When compared their services in the area, there's a four-inch unwashed water main along Rig Street. Waste water in that area is typically served by individual septic systems, and the fire services and ISO rating of three for the Southwest Fire District. Nearest traffic count we had in the most latest one was 2021 on Wilmington Highway, or US 17, and the trip count was 32,500. Staff estimates the capacity over 49,000. School servicing, the site is Blue Creek Elementary, Southwest Middle School, and Southwest High School. Blue Creek Elementary and Southwest High School have capacity, while Southwest Middle School is currently overcapacity. So we take a look at the zoning map here. You can see that the pink color is R-8M, Residential 8 Manufactured. That light blue color there is Highway Business. There, just to the north, though, is a section of ETJ for Jacksonville. So those other colors, the brown, the dark green, and that other blue, is not part of our planning jurisdiction. We take a look comparing the two districts. Residential 8 Manufactured has a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily residential development, as well as a specific emphasis on manufactured housing. And this is to be in urban areas of the county that have access to the necessary infrastructure to support development at that urban scale and intensity. As a comparison, Highway Business, there's no minimum lot size, and its purpose is to accommodate our regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors, again, where there's sufficient, sufficient infrastructure. This district also accommodates multifamily developments as well. We take a look at the comprehensive plan. The category is suburban growth, and its intent is to provide opportunities for moderate-density residential development and supporting non-residential development on the fringes of the municipalities and their associated urban growth areas. In this district, again, its intent is to provide for the single-family residential developments and the supported commercial developments. We take a look at the land use and development summary for suburban growth. The residential district that would be most comparable there would be, have a four to five dwelling units per acre for single-family, and for multifamily would be eight to 10 dwelling units. With this request being Highway Business, we will look at the non-residential category, and commercial uses that support neighborhoods and suburban growth areas are typically found along our arterials and at major intersections. They're in typical form of small to medium shopping centers and commercial strip development. And again, these employment-generating uses outside of retail and service businesses are generally limited. The intent is that it would be serving that nearby community, as well as also those arterial roadways and major intersections. Here you can see, the entire area is suburban growth for those properties there on your screen. Take a look at the regulatory position for the environmental conditions. There are no regulatory flood zones on the property, and as well as no blue line streams, which would be a regulated stream. We look at reasonableness in the public interest. Could be considered reasonable due to the subject property aligning with the future land use map, as Highway Business is an appropriate zoning district to the suburban growth category when it's located along major arterials or at a major intersection. It's supported by three objectives in the Onslow County Comprehensive Plan, 1.2, 2.2, and 6.2. Those deal with proactively managing growth, having cost-effective services, and providing a wide range of commercial. The proposed rezoning could be considered unreasonable due to the subject property being in residential development and not immediately adjacent to the major arterial, and objective 6.1 would deal with, we want to provide a range of housing types, style, location, price, and variety. Look at Planning Board, met at September 5, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for the meeting, and there were two citizens that spoke on behalf of it. One citizen spoke simply, asking some general questions of what is the intended use, and the other citizen was concerned with the traffic that might be coming on to Rig Street. There was no military impacts presented, though, at the Planning Board meeting. Here you can see an aerial with a little bit more of a vicinity of the surrounding area, show the property's relation to Rig Street, and then as well to Hemby Street and Bailey. Here you can take a closer look. You see the property is currently vacant, and what is nearby within a half a mile is United States Marine Corps Air Station at New River, Audrey Self-Storage, which you can see in the picture, as well as also, a little bit further up the road, Onslow Pines Park. And we'll take also a look at the street view from the property. So here you can see a picture there from Riggs, looking at it, as well as our public noticed sign. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2024, number 14, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment as it relates to the future land use map and comprehensive plan, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. As good clue is the staff presentation, sir.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, we will open the public hearing.
Speaker is Jason Houston.
Jason Houston, 306 New Bridge Street. I'm here on behalf of the Black family for this rezone. You guys may know, Altria's mini storage has been there for a long time. They've been, been part of the community for a long time. They own a lot of this property right here, and they acquired this piece, and they would like to expand. They own the parcels around it that are already zoned HB. My understanding is they wish to expand some of their mini storage use. We also rezoned some property just across the street that was in the city's jurisdiction for that same purpose. So if you have any questions, I'm here if you need me. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker, and I will mess this name up too.
Tom Ringio.
Thank you, Tom Ringio.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate the time. I own a property just across the street. When I acquired that property, there's a ditch that goes under the road from my property and leads across, underhears, across the military basin out to the river. When I purchased my property, there was a problem with that. We got, finally got it straightened out. And my only real concern with this whole thing is not to stop that drainage, because if it does, it causes a whole lot of problems, mosquitoes and all kinds of stuff just behind me with the property. me with the property that joins me that belongs to the county. There's supposed to be a road through there that was never put in, and it is actually draining all the way from the park out there close to Tim's house, back through me, comes up, hits the county ditch, goes under my driveway, and in the middle of my driveway, it goes across the road. We've managed to get all that cleaned out, and I'd hate like the devil to see that closed back up. It would cause some major problems in there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's the last speaker, and this public hearing is now closed, and the Board may exert its wishes on this application. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Do believe that Mr. Houston is correct, that they're looking at expanding the mini storage. They already have the front parcel as Highway Business, and this is just connecting it there, and that I think that they wouldn't want any drainage to back up either, so I feel sure they'll make sure that that doesn't occur for you, Tom. So do we have any further discussion? All right. All in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is rezoning 2024-15, public hearing on Southwest. Mr. Metcalf, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, Southwest Rezoning, P R E Z 2024 number 15. The applicant is John O. Pearson Associates, and the owner is Southwest Properties LLC. As we look at an overview of the request for P R E Z number 15, the requested change is from Residential 15, or R-15, to Community Business, or C B. Tax map number 752-14, and it's located at 2030 Dawson Cabin Road. And the rezoning area is a 2.84-acre portion of the total 23.28-acre parcel. And the existing use is that it's currently vacant. So this is just a portion of the property, specifically 2.84 acres. The water line is an eight-inch unwashed water main along Dawson Cabin Road, and the nearby wastewater served by individual septic systems. Fire district is for Verona with an ISO rating of three. And our traffic count that we could find was a bit outdated, with it coming from 2018. 6,800 trips. Staff estimates the capacity at 13,600. The school servicing the area is Southwest Elementary, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. Southwest Elementary and Dixon High School are currently overcapacity, while Dixon Middle School has a limited capacity of 15 extra students. Here you can see the rezoning area, and you can see there are the different pinks. This lighter pink is R-15. The darker one would be R-8M. But there, in the crosshatch portion, there you can see kind of more of that rhombus kind of shape, is the subject area that for the rezoning. So it's just that limited section of frontage of the total 23.28-acre parcel. And the darker blue, by the way, is Highway Business. As we compare the two districts, current zoning is Residential 15, minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, and the purpose of that district is to accommodate moderate-density single-family development in suburban areas of the county that have the necessary infrastructure to support suburban-scale development. While we compare to Community Business, there's no minimum lot size, and its purpose is to accommodate establishment of small-scale retail and service uses that would serve the nearby community, whether it be rural or just a nearby neighborhood. We look at the comprehensive plan. It details as rural residential, and its intent is to provide opportunities for low-density single-family development in rural areas of the county. Specifically, their rural residential is on the fringes of suburban growth, typically in our comprehensive plan. And as well, it's primarily residential in nature, with some small-scale convenience retail and service businesses located at major crossroads or along arterials. You can see with the residential, for single-family development, we want to see two dwelling units per acre. But with this being our request to Community Business, we're looking in our non-residential section, which would promote limited retail and service uses at crossroads that would directly serve nearby residents, as well as civic uses that would serve our community. Here we can see on our future land use map, the entire area is rural residential, to include certainly that intersection of Wilmington Highway and Dawson Cabin Road. We look at the environmental conditions for the property. There is no floodplains that are regulated, as well as no blue line streams. No wetlands have been submitted to the county staff at this time, and that would come through any sort of site plan review under the development review process. When we consider reasonableness in the public interest, it could be considered reasonable as Community Business could align with the future land use map as an appropriate district due to, we would want commercial developments in the rural residential category to be located near our crossroads. And certainly, we would see that with Wilmington Highway and Dawson Cabin Road. And it's consistent with the character area and some nearby uses. When we look at Objectives 1.2, 2.2, and 6.2 would be supporting it. 1.2 is, you know, proactively managing growth. 2.2 is cost-efficient services to our citizens, and then 6.2 is providing a wide range of commercial for our citizens. When we look at the proposed rezoning, could be considered unreasonable. We have 1.4 and 6.2. 1.4, again, we want to protect and certainly continue to support the base if there is any sort of conflict, and then as well, 6.2 promote housing, or variety of housing. We look at Planning Board. At September 5th, Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval, and the applicant was present for the meeting, and no citizen spoke regarding the request, and there was no concern from the base on any sort of conflict with the Community Business category. Here you can see an aerial of the subject property. You can see it's mostly there forested. And nearby in the area, we have the United States Marine Corps entrance at New River. There at the intersection as well, oh, we zoom in. Sorry about that. You could see there's also some notable businesses. There's a Circle K and a Shell gas station, as well as Cabin Creek Campground there. On the south side of Dawson Cabin into the north would be twice as nice. When we zoom in, you can see the property is currently forested with these aerials, which come from 2022. And then as well, when we did our site visit, while this was the same. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2024 number 15, adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment as it relates with the future land use map and comprehensive plan, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, we will open the public hearing. We have two speakers, Mr. Chairman. The first one is John Pierce.
Good afternoon. John Pierce, 5 Johnson Boulevard. On behalf of Southwest Properties and as well as Vanguard, I come to speak with you tonight. I think this proposal is reasonable. It would be an area-wide convenience, because there's a plan to go. Of course, you'll find out, there's a plan is to put a Dollar General there. And having said that, I went and met with an immediate neighbor, Mr. Stacy Pierce. I don't know if you know him or not, but he's been there right good a while, and I met with him. I showed him the plans. In fact, I met with him twice, because I've got some changes to satisfy, and he was fully content, and he said that be mindy-caminy, can walk out his place and go to the Dollar General. We wanted to make sure it wasn't be a problem with him, so we made sure we modified the plans with a light, would be not interfering with him, and we assured him we was gonna put up a fence and a screen, and he was very well satisfied with the plan. I wanted to make sure. He was aware of what was gonna go there, because he's a mighty fine man and a mighty good person, and I wanted to make sure he was content, and he was tickled with it. I think it's gonna be an asset to the county. It's gonna help increase the tax pace, and also the areas behind it and to the left of it is a wet area, so it's gonna be a highest and best use for that piece of property we got. And I think it's gonna be needed for the neighborhood. In a sense, it's not gonna increase traffic. Ain't gonna be no burden to the schools. And if y'all got any more questions, I'll be here to answer any questions that y'all may have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our second speaker is George Vinters.
Good evening. My name is George Vinters, 3825 Barrett Drive in Raleigh. I'm with Vanguard Property Group, and we'd be the proposed developer for the project. We've already completed pretty much every study we can do on this property, septic, geotechnical, wetlands. We've actually advanced our plans to a certain, actually, we've completed our plans just to make sure the project does work. We've had extensive conversations with DOT. We know what they want and what their concerns are, which were few. As Mr. Pierce said, we modified the right side of our project to accommodate the concerns of the neighbor. We've removed any wall pack lights, moved a sidewalk. We beefed up the landscaping on the right side to include Leland Cypress's and a fence, and he seems satisfied with that. But we are ready to submit the plans once, if the rezoning is approved, and move forward with the project. If you have any other questions, be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was the last speaker, and at this time, we will close the public hearing and defer to the Board's wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question for Carter. So the property that they've been referring to is already zoned as Highway Business, even though there's an individual living there? Is that correct?
See if the PowerPoint can come back, so I can show you the map. My understanding, one sec. There we go. Thank you so much. Keep scrolling. I believe they're referring to the left side of the property, or excuse me, you're saying right side is where the gentleman lives.
The blue.
So yes, he would be zoned Highway Business currently. Yes, ma'am.
And, but he's, obviously, is a resident. I mean, occupies a house there. Okay. And he's the one that they've addressed with the changes.
Yes, and certainly as well with any sort of site plan, because it would be a residential use of the property, there would be some type of buffer. But as well, that'd be something that we would engage with. A fence is one of the options for a buffering type.
Any further discussion, questions?
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to fit that particular area that you've leapfrogged a house and moved into an area right across from residential area there. It just doesn't seem to fit, fit the area. If it was continuous with the other properties, either the Circle K or the Shell on the other side, I could kind of understand it better, but you've got that separation with a resident right there, with a house right there in between it. It just doesn't seem to fit.
Well, Mr. Pierce, you had conversations with Mr. Stacy Pierce, so if he was good with it, because he's lived there for a long time. So I feel like if he and his wife or family are happy with what you're doing, and the proposed changes are being made, I think we have probably made some steps that have satisfied someone that's been there for a long time. So I think that's a good thing.
The community business zone is pretty restrictive. I mean, if they had requested Highway Business, it would have been contiguous to a Highway Business zone, but it would have been allowed more usage, so.
That's right.
The community business zone is probably, in my opinion, more appropriate for it not being out on the highway, on 17 Wilmington Highway, yeah.
And also gives people, Dollar General's going there, it's gonna give the residents there a shorter trip and easier access to goods that they might need.
Might take some traffic off the road.
Yes, absolutely. Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries 6-1.
Mr. Chairman, for our final public hearing, the seat. Mr. Metcalf will be presenting a request from Mark C. Sheffield LLC.
The Sheffield Rezoning Request, and Mr. Smitherman said, P R E Z 2024 number 16. The applicant is Mark C. Sheffield, and the owner is Mark C. Sheffield LLC. Overview of the request is from Residential 8 Manufactured, R-8M, to Rural Agriculture, or RA. Tax map number is 761-20.16. It's located at 117 Logan's Run Road in the Stumps Sound Township, and the rezoning area is 1.81 acres, which is the entire tax map parcel. Existing use is residential. For the water in the area, there's an eight-inch unwashed water main along Old Folkeston Road, and the nearby properties are served by individual septic systems. Fire service for the area is Turkey Creek with an ISO rating of four. The nearest traffic count we could locate was from 2022 on Old Folkeston Road with 7,900 trips. Staff estimates the capacity there at 13,600. The school serving the property would be Coastal Elementary, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. Coastal Elementary and Dixon High School are overcapacity, while Dixon Middle School has some capacity. But staff will not estimate any sort of new students, as this would be a downzoning from a higher-intensity zoning district to a lesser one. We look at the zoning districts. The R-8M is there in the pink, while the green would be Rural Agriculture. See, the current zoning district, R-8M, is a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and the purpose of that district is to accommodate moderate-density to high-density single-family and multifamily residential development, as well as a specific emphasis on manufactured housing in urbanizing areas of the county that have infrastructure to support development at that scale. Proposed zoning district is Rural Agriculture, minimum lot size of 20,000 square foot, and it's to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating low-density single-family and limited commercial uses. May the comment, that is a downzoning, because the minimum lot size goes from 8,000 to 20,000 square feet. We look at the comprehensive plan. It's for rural residential, and its intent is to provide for low-density single-family residential developments in rural areas on the fringes of the county suburban growth area. It's primarily residential in nature, with some small-scale convenience and retail and service businesses located those major crossroads and along arterials. When compared the land use and development summary, you know, there is the non-residential for limited retail and service uses at crossroads, like we saw with our previous rezoning. But this one, with it being to a residential district, we will look at the residential category, and for single-family residential developments, it would prescribe a density of two dwelling units per acre. Here you see the comprehensive plan. That entire area there is that rural residential Look at the environmental conditions for the subject property. There is no regulated flood zone on the property. There you see the 2% annual chance, or it's referred to as the shaded X. That is not a regulated flood zone. And as well, there are no regulated blue line streams on the property. Look at reasonableness in the public interest. Could be considered reasonable due to the subject property aligning with the future land use map, as Rural Agriculture is an appropriate zoning district to Rural Residential, and the subject property is consistent with the character of the area and nearby uses. Supported by three policies in the comprehensive plan, 1.2, 1.3, and 2.4. 1.3 is, we are called, proactively manage growth. 1.3 is to preserve the rural landscape of our county, and at 2.4 is coordinating with our Onslow County Schools, since there would be a reduction potential kids going to our school system. Proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable due to the subject request not being supported by the Onslow County Comprehensive Plan of Objective 6.1, excuse me. And that is, again, promoting a variety of range of housing types. We'll look at Planning Board. They met at September 5th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for the meeting, and three citizens did speak against the request. Their concerns were regarding traffic that could be created on Logan's Run, the ongoing maintenance of Logan's Run, environmental impacts to nearby creek, and how the property is currently being used. A discussion at Planning Board, and there's conversation of a creek that was along one of the property lines. However, staff was unable to verify that, because it is not a regulated creek. But certainly, could be, if there is a ditch, could be contributing to the headwaters of Turkey Creek potentially. Would be certainly the drainage route for that. No military impacts were presented, though, during the Planning Board meeting. You can see an overview of the site. Within the half-mile of the site is the Turkey Creek Fire Department, as well as a few residential subdivisions. And we take a closer look at the property. You can see there are some structures on the property, and again, active use of. use of residential at this time. And then here, you can see a picture of the subject property. And there, to the left side of the screen, is that manufactured home that you could see from the aerial. So, it's respectfully requested that Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2024 number 16, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment regarding the future land use plan and the map, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for P R E Z 16, and the first speaker is Weston Lyle.
Weston Lyle, 214 Highway 17 North, Holly Ridge. I'm the surveyor, working with Mr. Sheffield, the owner, to get the rezoning. So, I've heard Mr. Metcalf's presentation, so I'm just ask if y'all have any questions.
The next speaker is Mark Sheffield.
I'd like to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I don't have anything to add. I think Mr. Maycliff has been very thorough, and she needs a raise. She deserves a raise.
Mr. Chairman, that's the last speaker. We'll now close the public hearing and turn it over to you, sir.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Right. That brings us to item six, appointments.
Yes, sir. Your capable county attorney is collecting the ballots for the Airport Advisory Board positions.
are appointed to the Airport Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. No items for consent agenda, so we move right into your comments at this time, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to give you a few updates, and for that, also for the public's benefit. We continue to respond to requests for aid for our sister counties in western North Carolina that range from social services and emergency management administrative support to fire and rescue and others. And we'll continue to do that as long as it takes. We are working with the Association of County Commissioners to coordinate that work, as well as other agencies. And we will do whatever it takes to return the favor that our community has been paid over the years when we have times of disaster, and we'll continue to work with them as long as necessary for recovery. Also, for the public's benefit, appreciate the opportunity for the planning board and the Board of Commissioners to meet this afternoon to discuss the new land use plan, the comprehensive plan for the county's land use patterns, and to work collaboratively on how we can more efficiently and more effectively administer the rules of our land development activities for both the preservation of our very delicate environment, but also to manage growth, and also to ensure that there is an efficient and not overly burdensome process to make changes to our zoning and other development measures. Also, want to report real quickly at my appreciation to the city of Jacksonville for their help in improving our courthouse ADA accessibility through our two parking lots outside of the courthouse, and also for quickly responding to a request to add no parking signs outside of our EOC and our new EMS station that we acquired in the Jacksonville Commons. We appreciate the collaboration with the city of Jacksonville. And then finally, in just a moment, we're going to queue up a couple video pieces, very brief. But we have begun a communications campaign to help inform our citizens on how county government works. We heard that a lot during our strategic planning sessions. We also understand our demographics better, particularly, as we all know, we're the youngest county in North Carolina, and we have a very robust constituency between, let's say, 25 and 45. And we've not done a good job traditionally of getting to them. And so, what we are trying to do is to figure out how to communicate with people on their terms. So, we're using some creative techniques to do that, and I'm going to show you some of that. But it's part of our broader campaign of making county government more accessible, of helping folks understand our role. And so, these first two clips, and there's others being produced and already published, talk about the role of counties in North Carolina and the role of the Board of Commissioners. Just anecdotally, during our strategic planning work, one of the things that was impressed upon me as I attended sessions was not that we have a lot of new people coming to our community, it was that the people coming not only aren't from here, they're not from North Carolina. And North Carolina has a very different and robust and successful way of managing local government. In fact, after the reformation of the state in the 30s, we became known as the good government state for what we did to instill practices of democracy and responsibility and accountability in how we provide government services in North Carolina. So, if our staff would roll those two brief clips, these are being posted on Facebook and other places, and have had wild response. I think the first one's had over 2,500 views.
Did you know the North Carolina General Assembly originally created counties to carry out government on behalf of the state? This ensures all citizens have access to services.
Onslow County is required by the General Assembly to provide mandated activities, like funding for public schools, social services, elections administration, and public health. Counties perform these duties on behalf of the state government, but also have their own authority to create and enforce ordinances and levy taxes.
This special relationship between state and local government is unique to North Carolina and ensures all citizens have the opportunity to participate in government, no matter what county they live in.
These are just a couple of the ones we're working on. And as we go through the next few months, we will be working with you independently, or collectively and independently, talking about the role of the county commissioner. As we go into this election in a couple weeks, we want to make sure that people understand what county commissioners do. And then after those elections, we want to make sure they know who their county commissioners are. And we will continue with the sheriff and the register of deeds, and throughout our organization, so that people know what we do, who we are, and how we help in our community. And then finally, I just want to encourage everyone to vote. The early voting has begun. I understand it's very robust attendance, and I want to express our appreciation for our Elections Department, our Elections Director, our Elections Board, and all the volunteers, part-time and full-time staff that make elections work in Onslow County. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bennett, you want to start us off tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would first want to thank Dr. Burlingame Deal for bringing us information about the hospital. Our local Onslow County Hospital has come a long way in the last few years, and I look forward to seeing the changes in physician providers that she mentioned. It's going to help us to improve the services for our community, and also our partnership with UNC Health to just make our services better for the Onslow County community, for our citizens. Also, would want to bring to your attention an item that was in our consent agenda, and that was the increase in the elderly and disabled transportation assistance program to $21,000. And that program is intended to, is through Mr. Clay and our senior services, to help our seniors and disabled citizens with their medical transportation, transportation needs, and encourage citizens who are in need to call Onslow County and see if they qualify for assistance in transportation. I appreciate the increase, and I think that's a valid, necessary service for our citizens. And finally, we attended, several of us attended elected officials luncheon at Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune. And along with a lot of great information, there was one, I thought, very important item that I learned that I wanted to talk about tonight. The New River Inlet has been an issue for Onslow County for many years. Our fishermen and our boats cannot get in and out of the inlet safely at a lot of times, and we've tried to get funding for dredging. But I did learn last week that the Marine Corps has every intention of, some point in the next few years, bringing 150-foot ships up through New River to the Marine Corps Base, and they intend to dredge the inlet and the channel to 13 feet, which will be a huge benefit for Onslow County, for all of our citizens, whether recreational or commercial boaters. And that can't happen soon enough for anybody, but it's good to know that that is actually in the works, and I'm told that that is going to happen sometime over the next few years. So, that was really good news. Thank you. I hope you have a good evening. Be safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Scott? Well, got a couple things. First of all, I want to thank all the volunteers that have made the trip to our western part of the state. There's hundreds of people that is involved in that endeavor. I thank you for doing everything that you can for our brothers and sisters, and let God be the glory on everything that's happened and what is going to happen. Second thing I want to bring up is trunk or treat. It's time for all the geese and the gobmas and everybody else who wants to come out. You go out there in my yard, and I've got lore myself sitting out in the front yard, skeletons. They think it's a good joke and stuff, but everybody thought I was joking when I said I was going to put it out. I've done it for two reasons. We need to think about what's going on around us. People are leaving us quite frequently, and there are loved ones that's out here tonight hurting, because we have lost a loved one some way, shape, or form. Cancer is terrible. And the skeletons don't relate to that, but the meaning of it and behind it is, is that you never know what's going to go on tomorrow. I got a compassion for life. All lives matter. All opinions matter. And let's be a loving county like we've always been. Onslow County has got a heritage, and my county seal means a lot to me, and that's all I'm going to say about it right now. But that county seal, 1734, I love that seal and what it represents and who it represents. I thank you for the opportunity to serve, and look forward to seeing what's going to go on in the very near future. Please get out and vote. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Price?
Just want to reemphasize about the early voting, that it continues both this week and next, from 8:00 a.m. in the morning till 7:30 in the evening. Then on Saturdays, from 8 until 3, if I'm not mistaken. So, there's been a great turnout so far. That's good for everybody. That's good for America, good for Onslow County. Everybody gets out and vote and does their part. And other than that, have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. It's good to hear something about the inlet, but I can tell you this much, you can dredge it all you want, and it doesn't work. It only works for a short time, and then it's gone. We have to put a jetty there, and I'm talking about a permanent jetty. We've dealt with this for years, and I see Grant shaking his head. And we tried to get together with both Topsail and us, trying to figure out how we can do it. It costs about $12 million to do that. You have to jetty it. And I know they say it's illegal to do jetties. You got to do groins. Groins do not work for the inlet. They work for the beach. And everybody, even when the doctor, the physician, I'm not saying the doctor, the individual expert that came and talked to us, I guess, six years ago? Is that about what it sounds like, Ben? And he told us that the groins don't do anything but help the beach. It doesn't help the inlet. The inlet's a big thing, and I can tell you, the lobster, excuse me, lobster, talking about the shrimpers and all our fishermen, what they have coming out of the inlet there, with Johnny Wayne Midget and all those guys that fish down there, the inlet has to be jetted, and it's the only way it's going to work. You can dredge it out, and you're going to turn around, and you have to dredge it again within two years. Right now, you can't even get out. The shrimpers are going all the way up to Beaufort, they're going up to Moorhead City to go out to the ocean to do their shrimping. The other thing everybody's talking about, the election, for three days, 13,990 people voted. That is amazing. I want to thank our citizens for getting out and vote. But we have an app, and we keep watching the app. It'll actually app itself up every other day, and it'll let us know exactly what we have. But right now, it's 13,990. Like Maps says, it's 14,000. But that's about what it is. And it's really good to hear our citizens are out there actually voting. Everybody's mentioned it today, and it's just, I sat in line the other day in Swansboro, an hour and 15 minutes to get in to vote. So, you have to get out there, fellas, and I thank you for everybody doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, if you've watched a meeting or two, you might know that I serve on the Airport Advisory Commission, and I love that. It's the best, best position I could possibly have, besides being a commissioner, of course. In our last meeting, we had some exciting news. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Fountain and Mr. Yanessa, who will be serving on the board with me. We have a great time, and there's always good news that comes out of it. For those of you who don't know, there's a new website. Go check out the O A J's new website. One fun little fact, parking at the airport is at a premium, and we're looking to expand, because that is a pretty lucrative way of bringing in some money, is the people that park there and stay, and then fly, and then come back. And so, it's a hidden little income gem for us. Also, mark your calendars for art in the airport. Starting on November 25, they're going to have high school art, which is really fun. One of the highlights of my week last week was attending a, I don't know if you want to call it a workshop, a development session. We were updated by the company Barry Dunn, who's been working with our staff on the strategic plan, and it was a very, very interesting, thought-provoking, and affirming activity to hear. I think some of the things that we've been concerned with are right on track with what we have been hearing out there. So, that was exciting to know. I'm very glad to see just the amount of involvement of our citizens in this activity, because it is all of us together. it is all of us together that are moving forward, not just, you know, those of us standing up here or sitting down, sitting up here directing where it's going. So that was, that was really exciting. Lastly, is I attended the Onslow Victims Center Domestic Violence Awareness Month candlelight vigil on Thursday night, and I just want to bring everyone's attention to the fact that that is definitely, domestic violence is an issue in our country and in our county. We're not void of any victims there, and just thank you to the people that do serve in that capacity to help people that are victims, and just want to raise awareness to it, because it is, it affects all ages, all genders, all races, and economic backgrounds. So just thank you for what you do, and I hope this next year we can see a decrease in all of that because of the awareness that we have. So have a wonderful week, and thank you for the ability to serve for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Vice Chairman?
Just real quick, I just want to echo what Commissioner Buchanan says. We need a, we definitely need a jetty, because, I mean, you got sand out there, you're dredging. You know what it's going to be 100 years from now? Sand. It's going to be the same thing, just shifting. And so we need something in the inlet, and I agree with them 100%. Real quick, as far as Onslow Memorial is concerned, you know, I hear a lot of things about Onslow Memorial, good things and bad things over the years, but I can honestly tell you, I've had the best treatment that I've ever had at Onslow Memorial, to include my father. Now, less than a month ago, I was admitted for one day for observation, and they treated me like, like I was something else. They treat all the people there that way. They gave me the utmost care and attention. They made sure my meds were right. They took all the tests. They're very attentive, very professional. The doctors there, the neurosurgeons were there, very well-run machine, and I don't know how anybody can complain about OMH, because I think they do a great job. They've been doing a great job since I've been here since 1990 for myself and my family. So I just don't understand where the negativity is coming from. They're professional people, they're professional staff, and I appreciated her briefing today and talking about how busy they are, and my hat's off to the hospital and all their workers. So kudos to them. Just to echo what some of the other people have said, this is a very important election, folks. November 5th is probably one of the most pivotal elections in this country. At least it is for me as far as I've been alive. This has been one of the biggest turnouts that we've seen in early voting. In fact, it's record number. It's record-breaking numbers. When you have 13,990, as Commissioner Buchanan said, let's just round it up to 14,000 people in three days that came out to early vote, that's saying something. Whether you're Republican, Independent, or Democratic, it doesn't really matter. People are taking an interest in this election, and please get out there and vote. Don't wait till the last minute. You know, if you've got opportunity to go vote, get it over with. You know, vote. Early voting is continuing for the next week and a half. I'm not going to sit here and tell you who to vote for. I'm just saying, exercise your right to vote. Go there. I don't care if you vote Democrat, Republican, or whatever. Just vote. It's very, very important, and I appreciate all the citizens getting out there. And the first day, I thought I was going to walk in there and go, I'm going to go vote early. Yeah, about 24 hours later, I was back in line again, because that line was wrapped all the way around the commons like you wouldn't believe. And so take this opportunity, folks. And one last thing, shout out to Tony Paget out there. Good to see you. He's one of the candidates running for county commissioner. Is he sitting in our, in our meeting, where he should be? And I appreciate your attention. Other than that, y'all have a great, great day, great week, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Couple of things. Mr. Carpenter mentioned the candlelight vigil that was held last Thursday, and this Saturday night is Dancing Stars of Onslow, a big fundraiser to support the Women's Center. So make sure you, if you want to go, get your ticket now, because they are almost sold out. At least two of us up here danced in the Dancing with the Stars, but only one of us won the year that we did it. The other one did not win it. I'm not saying anything, Vice Chairman. And also Saturday night, if you're not able to get a ticket to go to the Dancing Stars, come out to Onslow Pines Park and Rec for the Monster Bash, and support Parks and Rec and what they're doing with the Monster Bash. Lots of kids out there having a good time. Be sure to come out and do that. I am going to take just a minute, get us out of here before that. I want to take just a minute, because he didn't say anything about it. I got a message from Commissioner or Vice Chairman Knapp yesterday, and he happened along a accident that took place on Commerce Road or Commerce Street, and so he stopped, stopped to see if he could help or do anything, and there was a, there was a man that was stuck under the, under the trailer with pretty severe injuries, and Vice Chairman jumped in that situation and took his belt and applied a tourniquet to the gentleman's leg, and held that until EMS was able to get there on scene and put their tourniquet on it and let Commissioner Knapp go. And no one has said it, but whenever you've got that type of injury, the pelvis, the leg broke, being broken, and the blood coming out pretty rapidly, we don't none know what would have happened, but we do know that if Vice Chairman hadn't have acted quickly at that time and made that decision to assist that gentleman, he may not be with us with the, from what I've heard, the amount of blood loss. So we need to commend Vice Chairman Knapp for stepping in a situation that very well could have saved the life of someone here in Onslow County. So we appreciate that, Vice Chairman, and, you know, we need, we need people, we need people like that to step in when it's needed. So we appreciate that. And with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn.